Work session of February 5th, 2019. Please silence and shut off your cell phones if you would, and please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Melanie, we have some additions, and I don't believe we have any deletions.
We have two additions: a sets her backup, Kenworth Dump Truck purchase, purchase excuse me, and a Forest Service contract is a deletion.
Okay, uh, Ford, do you have any additions or deletions?
Um, actually, on the second page, I believe, of the agenda, um, I forgot to go Melanie and change that to sort of Derek Commissioner Williams later response to the Senate bills. Just like to give more of an update.
Update, very good, appreciate it. With that, uh, we have quite an agenda today. Start right off with our time, Brian, Mr. McGowan and others. Come on up, there's another chair there, and welcome. Good morning.
And thank you for giving us this opportunity to present our proposal for the use of the incubator building. We are very excited to be here. I'm Robbie McGowan, I am the CEO of GK Sound Booth. Mike McGowan is the president, Megan McGowan is our CFO, and yes, we are all related. We are very happy to be here. So I'm going to talk a little bit about GK Sound Booth in general for a few minutes. Mike is going to talk about the new subsidiary company that we would like to form, and Megan is here to talk about any financial implications. So, uh, we, McGowan family, purchased GK Sound Booth, it was called Gretchen Industries, almost two years ago from Gretchen and Ken Strigling. We have enjoyed what we have done very, very much. We make very high-end custom sound enclosures. So, we will make anything from about the size of a small room to the size of a very heavy bread box and everything in between. The work that we're doing now is 100% custom. We do work for musicians, for recording studios, we do work for the government and military, we do a lot of work for university laboratories and their research, we do much work for industrial uses. So if there's an industry that wants to test, um, how loud their dishwashing motor is, uh, that's something we would supply a custom sound enclosure for. We're doing something very exciting. We have provided an entire production studio for a technical high school. We are also working with a Native American tribe to, uh, develop a sound enclosure for them so they can have the elders record the native language. So, uh, our, our custom work runs the gamut. We are very, very committed to Lakeview, we love it here. I have to say, I'm a bit surprised that I love it so much, but I, I love it, we, we really love it. We try to source as much of our materials locally, as much as possible and practical. We are trying to involve the community by working with Amanda Orlando and Workforce KCC. We've had three of her trainees work with us. We are also working with Fred Smith at the high school, uh, to, with a work-study program. Currently, we have two seniors who are, um, on the work-study program with us. One comes first, our zero period in the morning till whenever he has to get back, and the other one comes at the end of the day. So we're very committed to, um, local talent and developing local talent starting at an early age. We know that a lot of people cannot afford our 100% custom sound enclosures. So we're doing a lot of research and development to come up with a new product, and that's our new subsidiary company that we are planning to form and that we would like to use the incubator building for, and I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and he's going to talk about that new subsidiary. Thank you. So, so the idea, uh, has, uh, has come to us, uh, in, in two ways. The first way is the one that Robbie just mentioned, which is that, uh, the 100% custom fabrication business is our legacy business. It's profitable, it's very sustainable, we have a unique place in the market. There are actually only three companies in America that do what we do. And, uh, interestingly, two of the three are based in Oregon, and I think the reason for that is because we have no sales tax and we are a timber products state, and so much of what we do is based on the local supply of wood products. Um, the third one is based in Nashville, uh, near Nashville, Tennessee, and they focus on the recording, uh, industry, which only makes sense. Um, but, you know, as we, as we inherited this business, um, what we see is that there's only so much growth that can occur. We feel like there are still opportunities for us to grow the core segment of our business, but we, I would say, are looking for an opportunity to expand here in Lakeview. And as we considered the options of expanding the core business or trying something a little bit different, we were encouraged by the, the team that we inherited from the previous owners to consider something, as Robbie said, that's a little bit less expensive than these customized booths that we build that cost as much as a new car or more. Um, in particular, our manufacturing team in the factory are all serious gamers, something that, uh, none of us are, and that, you know, it's a, it's a market segment that we were aware of, but, you know, not involved in at all. They encouraged us to help them be more successful in their, in their gaming hobby, their after-work activities, which they take very seriously. Uh, and what we learned is that maybe because, uh, Lakeview's a small town with fewer distractions and that we're a fairly remote community, gaming is a big deal here among younger people. So, uh, as we looked into it, and in particular into the acoustics that are part of the gaming industry, what we found is that there's not any product out there that is affordable. There are certainly customized booths, and we ourselves have done, uh, very high-end booths for game developers, um, who, or, you know, others who have a need for a sound isolation system, but that's not what we were, uh, being encouraged to do. And as we looked at it and we saw that there's nothing in the market for this group of consumers, but yet there are millions, tens of millions, hundreds of millions of people who are actively involved in gaming hours every day, we thought an opportunity existed to expand our business. Um, having said that, it's something that will be very different from what we have done in the past. Because we are 100% custom fabrication business now, we work with our existing customer base to design something that really suits all their needs. We request and receive payment info in advance because there's no market for what we build other than a particular, uh, customer. And, uh, you know, the reputation is there, the company's been in existence for almost 20 years, and people feel comfortable, um, you know, buying product on that basis. The gaming business, on the other hand, is a cash-and-carried consumer business. You can buy your game controls, you can buy your games, um, you register online to play these massively multiple games. So, and, and the price point is very low, in the, in the hundreds of dollars for gaming equipment, rather than in the tens of thousands of dollars for the sound isolation equipment that we, um, build and sell to industrial and other customers. So we need to have a different way of focusing our business. The product has to be simple, it has to be easily mass manufactured, we have to have the workforce here in Lakeview to be able to build a lot of product at very high quality at uniform, um, levels of manufacturing. We need to be able to afford the equipment, and we need to have a marketing partner who can get this product out in large volume. And when we thought about developing this separate line of business, the opportunity that we saw was there are space outside of our current space in the industrial park. And the reason is that our core business is very, um, well-established, and we have fully occupied our current manufacturing space, and there's no more space available to us in the building that we're in. And we have worked with, uh, SCOED and others to look around town to see whether there are other structures available for us to rent in order to test out this new market. And the best opportunity that we've come up with, lucky for us, is that there happens to be a vacancy right now in the incubator, which is immediately next door to us. In fact, it couldn't be more convenient. We can literally, literally run a forklift back and forth from our current space to the open incubator space. So, and the advantage of the incubator, obviously, is it gives us a chance to try something new that we otherwise would probably struggle to try, because if we had to build a new building, buy land, um, you know, that would be a much higher capital investment. We would probably have to borrow money to do that, we would have to locate land, we would have to wait in order for the construction to occur in town. So the incubator presents some unique advantages to us. We understand that it's not meant to be a permanent, uh, facility, but, you know, as a, as a trial, I think it's something that would, you know, be very useful to us, just to be probably here today. Um, in terms of, uh, how we would approach that business differently, you know, we see, um, the continuation of our partnering with, um, the KCC workforce team and also with the high school, in particular, the, uh, the kids who are in the shop programs, who are looking for an opportunity to practice a, a skill, to learn a skill. We're really good about training, you know, we'd like to get people who have solid personal habits and a, and a reliable lifestyle, but they may not have the tool skills, we're good to, to start with those people. We have, we're lucky enough to have inherited a, um, a production manager who's a good trainer, uh, has a long, a long history with this business, and, uh, is, is really good at bringing people into the business and helping them to learn skills, not just woodworking and production skills, but also life skills. Uh, and we're confident that, you know, he'll stay with us, he's actually very excited about this possibility of this new, uh, project. So that's, uh, that's the sort of market analysis. We promised to leave some time, um, for questions, but, um, I want to stop here and see if you have any questions. If not, Megan can give just a little bit of an overview of how the finances, uh, would work. We're not going into too much detail. We've been working very closely with the SCOED team, both here in Lakeview and also with Betty Riley in Clamath, to make sure that the business plan that we've put together is realistic, it doesn't, you know, miss key points, um, and that we have an opportunity to, to build for success if we're given the opportunity, if suspected.
I'd like to hear from all three of you, and then I, nat- naturally will have several questions.
Yeah, of course. Uh, Megan, you want?
Sure. Yeah, I can keep it really short and sweet. Basically, financially, after running projections and, like you said, working with SCOED, this is kind of our only option to make this project financially feasible, especially in the short term. And also, we need to be first to market with this product. We need to get it up and going, and that's going to be how we are successful. And so having the incubator building, which is subsidized rent, which really helps out financially, but also that's so close to our current location, um, so we can diffuse and maybe potentially delay some of that very large capital investment that's needed, um, would just be such a game changer. So we're really excited about the opportunity and really hope to have the space.
Yeah. So, one of my favorite shows is The Shark Tank, and it's almost like sitting here at Shark Tank today. Um, so I go all the way back when Gretchen started and everything. What a, what a great thing, and you guys pushing it to the next level, very encouraging. Incubators for exactly what you're talking about, it's to foster and help a business to expand or to have a new business get going at a lower rate so that they can keep their capital into production and then eventually get their own building offsite. Gretchen went through that whole process herself. So, um, I have probably a lot of questions, but what are you talking about, the number of jobs, roughly, like the first year startup of this subsidiary, and then what are you wanting to build to, number of jobs you may have there?
In the first year, um, by the end, we hope to have five full-time employees.
Awesome.
Yeah. So that probably would change, or definitely would change in the second year, we would add at least a couple more full-time employees.
Is that just for the gaming?
Just for, yeah. So five completely new additional jobs.
That, um, what we use is one job here is equal to about 500 in Multnomah County. So, and, and that's a true study, that Ginger can vouch for, that's a true study. So that's the impact you're doing to our community when you're talking five jobs. We look at one job, huge, five jobs, awesome, that is really good for you guys, good for our community. Working with the schools, I really like that. Working with KCC, I mean, it, it's all falling right into a pot, taking advantage of what we have here, I really like that. So, um, we have, we have a general contract that we work with Dave Sonnen, so, um, what we would have to do after we have our questions and everything is, is give direction to Dave to work with you to get that put together, and probably we'll bring that back our next meeting for the, the final, um, approval by the board.
Right.
With that said, what is your timeframe? Are you looking at March 1st to get in there? You looking like yesterday? What are, what are, what's in your business plan and in your thoughts of where you're going? What, what kind of timeframe are you thinking you want to be as incubator building?
So we have, we have, as Megan says, the important thing is to be first to market, and the reason why is that the, unlike the, the legacy business, this product is easier to manufacture. So we could imagine that there could be competi- if this product is as successful as we hope it will be, there could be competition, not just, you know, here in Oregon or in the United States, but in particular in China, where so many of the things, consumer products that we buy these days are manufactured. And so we want to be able to establish the, the quality, the locally-made, uh, brand, and, you know, the Oregon community support for this product before anybody else really gets wind of it. And in order to be able to do that, we need to create a marketing relationship with someone that can get our product out big and fast. We're small, and, and Lakeview's remote, so we don't have the marketing muscle that someone like Amazon or Microsoft or one of the game publishers would have. And so our strategy is, it, once we get the commitment of the space, is to go out and find that marketing partner and say, "Look, this is our product, this is the price point, this is where we're going to manufacture it, and we would like to partner with you and to move it through your sales and marketing channels." If we can do that, then we'll need to have the space available to manufacture pretty quickly in high volume, in the volume that our business plan presents. So we have a few months, I think March 1st is a good target for us if we can make it. The equipment that we see to be necessary in the building, you know, there are half a dozen pieces of equipment that, you know, involve a pretty, for us, a pretty significant, uh, investment. We also need to, um, we would need to do a few leasehold improvements to the building, not lease to add heat, there's no heat in that bay. And because of the chemicals that we use, the adhesives, the paints and so on, um, the building can't freeze. Workers also need to be able to move their things along. So, so that's one of the things that we would need, and because some of the equipment that we use is manufacturing equipment that needs to be vaulted to the floor so it doesn't move around and create a safety issue, um, you know, we would ask for a commitment from the county for three years at least, so that if this project goes forward as we hope and expect, we would at least have that period of time to get our manufacturing, our employment, our training up and running, and then, you know, toward the middle of that period, we would know that we're going to need a purpose-built, uh, business that would accommodate both our businesses, the legacy and the new one. Um, if we had just a one year, we probably couldn't sustain the investment and the modification of the space for our use. And after all, we don't know how long it will take us to get going. So we see a three-year, three-year window. Um, if the, if this is a complete bust of an idea, obviously, we will have a lease and we have a financial commitment to take care of for the county, and that's something we can well do, um, and would do, but, um, you know, you, you plan for a positive outcome, not a negative one.
And, and we have basically two different leases that we've entered into over the years, a one-year lease and then a progressive lease that is multiple year, up to four years, I believe, three or four years, can't remember. We, we can decide whatever we want.
Sure.
Usually on the progressive lease, you start out at a lower rate, the next year it goes up.
Right.
Unless you come back and negotiate with us and put out a good case why you can't sustain that. And the reason for it progresses is for you to get out.
Right.
And go buy a building and, and be part of our community. So that's the way that it's been set up over the years as a progressive lease, and is that what you've been looking at, is that it'd be a progressive three-year lease, start out at a certain, 12 months later it'd go up a little bit more, third year it'd go up a little bit more?
Right, exactly right. So we, we spoke to SCOED, I've also met with Mr. Berman, and, and we've taken a look at the draft lease. We, we don't see any impediments, and the business plan that Megan has put together counts on the increase in the, the price of the lease according to your usual progressive terms. And so it's on that basis that the business plan looks workable to us and, and, and also to SCOED. So, um, we, we're not asking for, you know, an ongoing massive subsidy, we're asking for a chance to test a, a new product and to, and to find a workforce in town that can help us to develop that business.
Okay. Um, as far as, as reconfiguring the inside and that stuff, um, what we've done in the past is that works through our facilities, through Dave Berman.
Right.
If it's going to be major changes, he'll use to bring them to the Board of Commissioners. If they're generic, that can be repaired or taken out afterwards, and all that has to follow, obviously, all the local permitting and all those type things.
Sure.
So, uh, that's really, over the years, we've allowed quite a bit, you know, that's what it's there for, is to build it, be able to be used for it.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, I've been asking most of the questions. This is the first lease these guys have been through, but did you, do you have any questions more?
Yeah, I do, actually. Well, for one, I told you guys earlier that I thought your business plan was awesome, and the idea is awesome. My concern, and I don't want to be a wet blanket, but my concern is as soon as you start marketing this to these guys that can do that, you know, whether, whatever the game outfits are, they're going to want you to move.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And they want, they're going to want you to do things cheaper. And for Lake County's benefit, I think we need to have something that keeps you here, right? And, um, because it's all about you guys creating the jobs for Lake County and, and having a great business like you guys have already, it would be a detriment for the county to lose you.
Right.
Especially if this takes off like I think it will, um, we would lose way more than five employees. And, um, I just want to have, and I don't know what, but I want to have some kind of protection for the county that if you guys move out, you know, we're going to get our money back. You know, that could have been, and I, I don't want to sound like a, like it, but I'm, I'm just trying to protect the county as far as, you know, you guys, it's your business, you're doing a great job, but what can we do to keep it here? You know, and that's my major concern with it, because with an idea like this, I can already see what's going to happen, you know, because the gaming world is huge, and, um, it's also really powerful, and, um, I just...
This is so, so one way that, um, this private business, so, but one thing is, is if they grow and this goes what we think it is, and they find a piece of property and they qualify for the enterprise zone, then that's a tax break, and they can grow up to five years or even more. There's things to make it attractive for them to stay right here in Lake County. What we have is what they told us at the very first, they love Lake County. And so, uh, anytime somebody loves Lake County and they want to bring their business or keep their business here, I think it's awesome. On, on, people are going to, it's a great idea. This is going to be on television or on the web tonight. Other people are going to say, "Wow, I want to do that too," possibly. I don't know if you're going to patent it or what you're going to do, but I assume just talking with you guys and seeing the way you guys operate, that you've got a lot of things going right now, and you're protecting your business.
That's why being the first in the market is very important on your patents and, and that, but like I say, it just goes right back to when I was commenting on the dangers of losing you. We don't want to lose you, and so we'll do everything we can to help you guys succeed, but we also want that success to stay in Lake County.
You know, we, as we looked at, you know, the, the challenges of building the business like the one that we've presented, um, the, the number one concern is workforce. Uh, that, that's the number one concern. And, and if we were to, to, for example, and when we looked at the expansion of our legacy business, which is very, uh, workforce intense because of the customized nature, people need to have metal skills and wood skills and acoustic skills and upholstery skills, and those things take time, and it's not easy to find, to retain, uh, people here who have all those skills and are flexible and, and solid workers. The advantage of building the business that we're presenting now is that it's a, a high-volume repetitive manufacturing, and we think that's the better model for expansion in Lakeview at this time. Over the course of growth, if we can do what we think we want to do, then there will be a lot of people hopefully who will, uh, be from Lakeview, who will be trained to use the materials and the machinery that we have, and then we'll be able to attract some new people to come into Lakeview, from Clamath and, and elsewhere. And, you know, we'll be able to sustain the growth in that way. But to answer your question, you know, a business has to thrive as a business can thrive, and number one is workforce. If we just can't get the people to build the volume of equipment, then we would have to set up a satellite site someplace else. We, as a family, we don't see leaving Lakeview as the headquarters of our business. We live here, we love it here, we have friends here. So, but to have a second site, it might have to happen if we have the growth that can't be accommodated here because we don't, we can't attract the workforce, or we couldn't get a building up in time, might have to, you know, subcontract a portion of our manufacturing to another, say, wood shop in Van or, or Clamath or someplace for a time until...
That's called business.
That's just business.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I did have, I have a bunch of questions, but we don't have time for it all, so we'll have to get together and see. One question I did want to, uh, jump onto real quick was just the, the, um, the possibility of competing with your own market, because you guys are already designing a very high-priced, um, uh, high-valued, um, product. Um, if you branch into this other market that you're providing something along the lines of a sound booth, or at least, uh, along those lines anyway, um, for a cheaper price, do you see the possibility of competing with products that you have in your other business as well? You don't see that really happening as far as...
The, the distance is very great, so...
Yeah.
Everything that we do in the legacy business is a fully enclosed. This one's not. This is essentially clamshells, right? So something in front, something behind.
I see, so...
Open on the top.
And I was going through that, and I was kind of curious exactly what kind of products that you would be offering in this other business, and whether or not they, they would compete. You're not just building something similar, cheaper.
Very, very parallel.
Gotcha.
In fact, it might actually go the opposite direction, so someone could start out with the, the cheaper products used specifically for gaming and actually want to upgrade... the cheaper products used specifically for gaming and actually want to upgrade to a fixed enclosure as they become more successful in their gaming business or what have you. So, we actually hope to see it go the other direction where it might actually drive business to our current business as well.
So, can we do a tour of your outfit someday?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
You're welcome anytime. Jay's has been in once before, so, but you're always welcome, and we do have, you know, some prototypes in the office right now, so, you can get a better sense of the difference. In fact, in the office there, there is a legacy sound booth there, so you can see what that full enclosure is about, and then there's a prototype of this new product in the office, and you can see the differences and see that they couldn't really compete.
Well, the circle of Gretchen starting in incubator building, moving out, building, building, coming back, looking at another building possibly, is just exciting.
Exactly.
So, the one thing that we probably should before we move on to our next thing is, it's easy enough, you've seen our boilerplate lease and everything, what kind of numbers would you talk in the first year on the rent? We have all those blank, and that's sort of the uncomfortable thing to talk about, would you rather work with Dave on that and bring that back at the next meeting, or would you like to say, this is what we need for the first year startup?
No, I think it's a good, it's a fair question. So, we, I did spend a few minutes with Mr. Berman, it was a week or ten days ago, he explained the way that progressive lease normally works, and we're okay. Megan used those numbers that he provided as the step up. So, those numbers work for us, and we wouldn't be asking for concessions beyond those. Those are already, I think, a little bit below market rent if you could find the space. The key thing for us is the proximity and the ceiling height and the industrial nature. So, we're okay with those if you are, and I think the next step would be to just put those numbers into a lease and work on the...
Dave is actually sitting back here, so he's taking it all, isn't he? And so, I think the board's ready to just let you work with Dave, bring that contract back to us in our next meeting, which is the work session on the nineteenth, I believe, this month, we meet twice a month. And should they all have that in the form for us to sign, become effective March first. And so, there's some uniqueness. I talked to Dave just a little bit, and you mentioned it, Mr. McGowan, the heat in there, and so, that's pretty expensive setup to do, so work with Dave on that. There's ways to partner possibly, or maybe if, because that has become a permanent fixture of the building, so depending on what you put in there or want to put in there, what Dave suggests we have put in there. And I don't want to commit or anything, sometimes you can say, can we reduce the rent or the investment of that, because it's going to be your capital expense, but it's going to be our property. So, those kind of things can be looked at, or not there to try to enhance the building and your cost and then with that, so we want to be a good player in that way.
Right.
So, and the other ones have propane, I believe, and I would, if you go with propane, make sure it's designed so that most of them switch over natural gas in case we get that, or when we get that, not in case, when we do get that. So, you guys good?
Yeah.
So, work with Mr. Berman.
Sooner the better, honestly, for you guys to say.
Yeah. I give Dave time to run it all by legal counsel to get it to our next meeting and into the middle of this month.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys too much, appreciate it. And you're welcome, stay for the rest of the day. Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much. Of course, you really have to work.
Yeah, no, fortunately, fortunately you did.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, now we got our nine, nine-thirty item, Mr. Cahill and Mr. Thompson have two different things, you guys want to come up?
I didn't have handouts.
There you go. This much paperwork, I need to remind you, we only have a half hour.
We're very short speaking. We're not real open. Short speech and long reading, so.
It's what you want to start with.
We'll go with ten sixty-seven first, and then we'll jump into the truancy thing. It's kind of an interesting thing, you know, the Senate, the governor passed Senate Bill ten sixty-seven to take effect on July one, twenty seventeen. The interesting thing about Senate Bill ten sixty-seven, I think it's the most guarded secret that state Oregon State Legislature ever put out, because I'm sitting in a negotiating session last spring with our classified employees, and the representative of the union brought up, well, Senate Bill ten sixty-seven, it's just going to be devastating to us. I don't know what, ten Senate Bill ten sixty-seven? Well, I dug in, I brought Jack in on it, and this deal with Senate Bill ten sixty-seven is really going to affect Lake County. What it is, it eliminates the opt-out provision on insurance for employees in Oregon that are insured either under OEBB, which is the school district, or PEBB, which is the prison, Department of Human Services, they work in Department of Forestry, and so on. So, case in point, I'm going to use two of my teachers, for example, I'm going to, it's no secret, the devil and Kristy Reese are a married couple, they work for District Seven, and they're both on OEBB. Kristy came to work for the district. She was given the opt-out provision, where she can take that health insurance premium, opt out of it, enroll that premium, her, you know, entitled benefit over into a TSA. And that's what we do, and it makes it very attractive for people to come to our district and stay in our district, because they can do that. I'll use Tandy and Dustin Gustafson as another one. Tandy, you know, came to the district under OEBB, Dustin was working with the Department of Forestry under PEBB, and Tandy had that opt-out opportunity, and under Senate Bill ten sixty-seven, effective on October first, twenty nineteen, these employees, primarily married couples, will lose that opportunity. Basically, what you're doing, you're depriving the person in the marriage of their desire, or their equal benefit that they should be receiving. We've taken to the fight on this, we've been working with Senator Reskey, excuse me, Representative Reskey, Senator Lithicum. Senator, Representative Reskey has put forth a bill, it's in a letter in here, dated January thirty-first, it's called House Bill twenty-eight sixty-nine, that the purpose of that is, is to, you know, reverse that opt-out provision. So, I guess the reason why Jack and I are here today is asked to ask for your support, because this is going to have quite an effect, effect on a number of our, you know, state employees in Lake County, especially District Seven. Right now, I have thirteen married couples in District Seven who are basically going to lose their equal benefit that they should be receiving.
One of the frustrating things about this, as we talk about the marriage issue, is if you are domestic partners, then you no longer fall underneath this law. And so, if my, say, for example, my wife and I, we were just domestic partners, being domestic partners, she would still fall underneath my insurance, and I could have her claim underneath my insurance. But not, or because of the fact we were not married under this law, she would still be able to get that opt-out benefit from the school district and have that money put into the TSA. But because we're married, that's not an option underneath this law. And so, it's a, it's a marriage penalty. And so, we know that this has gone to the Department of Justice of being in violation of, one, just being protected class, and the other is the Equal Pay Act, because, you know, you've got two teachers doing the exact same job, one's a domestic partner, one's married, but one gets more money than the other for doing the same position. And so, there's a conflict there. So, there's been some, there's been some movement there. No idea where the Department of Justice is on that, but we are seeing some legislative stuff coming through. I saw something presented, in the initial presentation of bills, and it allows for the doubling of insurance, saying that you could both have the insurance, but it does not allow for the opt-out benefit. So, there's no cash value to your, to your insurance benefit, so.
There's a thing in there, the governor, she's reconsidering it, I don't know what the timeline is on that, or what the status is on that. I sent emails to the governor's office, to which I've received no reply as of yet, you know, really stating our case, and, you know, devastating effect on our district seven, as well as other, you know, employees in this county that are, you know, duly insured and entitled to the opt-out benefit. So, anyway, that, I guess what I'm asking for, and we are asking for today, is your support and backing us on this, perhaps giving a letter to the governor, also maybe to Representative Reskey, Senator Lithicum, you know, asking for that the opt-out provision, you know, be eliminated. And, you know, it's specifically, once again, I think the big thing for Lake County, I'm here time and time again, I'm on the Warner Creek Advisory Board, recruitment, retention are critical issues for this county, not only Warner Creek, but also Lake County, District Seven. If we have incentives like this, that, you know, track and keep our people in this county, to me, it's a win-win if this thing be eliminated, opt-out provision, Senate Bill ten sixty-seven.
One of the other areas that really affects Lake County in comparison to a large metropolitan area is we have a higher percentage of married couples that are both in one of these two insurance areas, that are either working for the school district, and one's working for the prison, or one's, you know, the school district and one's working at the forestry, something of that nature. There's a lot higher percentage of those folks working both in those, underneath those insurance programs versus in the large metropolitan area where there may be, one, the spouse may be a teacher, the other one may be working for Nike, or working for Safeway, or working for whatever. And so, there's a lot more options for jobs. When we're here, living wage jobs are hard to find, and that most of those are of government aid in this county, so.
So, this is law right now?
Yes.
And so, are you...
On October first, twenty nineteen.
Okay, so it takes a...
Let's get that opt-out provision.
Okay. And so, just here, honestly, one other, county's different form of government, how about if there's a county employee and their spouse is a state employee?
It all depends if they have OEBB or PEBB insurance.
Are your county employees on PEBB or your insurance source?
We are not.
Yeah, but we can't opt out either, because my wife and I, she works at the hospital, and we both have the same insurance, but none of us can opt out. And so, we're double-covered with the same insurance.
Yeah.
So... Use your bill opt out here, and there's a hundred dollars on the county side. You and Jay probably should have a discussion offline on that. So, what you're asking for from us on this is a letter of support to our, we have two, two senators and three reps.
Yeah.
And you're working mainly with Rep. Reskey and Senator Lithicum.
Yeah, and actually, we went to a legislative summit up in Baker, testified up there too, and it just so happens that Lynn Finley and Cliff Benz were sitting there, they were receptive too, and appreciated their attention to this, and I think their support as well.
Can you reach out to my colleague as well?
Yep. Do you have a generic letter?
I can probably knock out some sort of a template for you.
Would you get it to Melanie, and then we could get it in our format?
That would be wonderful.
Appreciate that, really.
Anyway, and thank you for your support, gentlemen. A hundred percent for me. So... We'll move on to truancy. We'll move on to truancy. He's a trade-off, so I'll let him talk about it, so.
So, currently, the school districts, or all the school districts of the county, and the county, we, you have a agreement. Basically, it's the same agreement as what the law is, other than it's less restrictive than what the law is as far as truancy in the county. The current law says twelve years to eighteen years supporting or are considered to be truant, and so, anybody under that age limit, the county would not do any enforcement or anything like that in that nature. We would like to propose that we change that to go to school age of children, because as a school district and as an ESD, I'm in charge of the fact that all students can be considered truant. And so, we're just looking to change that. Other than, other than those years, nothing else on the agreement, just changing it to six years to eighteen years rather than twelve years to eighteen years.
What do you got, Jay?
Just a little history, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Cahill, on that county ordinance for the truancy. Historically, Mr. Cahill, as you might recall, we were having the issue with truancy. Parents were getting cited in the court, and the court was addressing this with the parents. Unfortunately, the parents were at the middle, so they leave four at six, they're not there to get the kids up and get them off the school, so the kid, there's not one in school, they're sleeping, and he goes to school whenever. So, we took issue with that, because we were getting more parents cited in the court because of that. So, we created this ordinance to help address that, and the reason we left it from twelve to eighteen is because those are the kids we can supervise in the juvenile department. So, the first, as we know, the first time they go to court, the judge orders them to attend school as right as they should. If they don't, then they're cited to the juvenile department, then we take it to court, and we file petitions for contempt of court. So, then we can work with youth twelve to eighteen. We don't have, we have no authority from six to a lot of, we really don't, we have had some folks, a couple of kids who were ten years old in the juvenile department, we were pretty much babysitting, and we weren't really doing anything with them, because we, our hands were tied, we had really had no authority over that. So, I think what we can do, what we should do, is we should sit down with Judge Nichols and see how we can address those kids, because it always reverts back, that's the county ordinance, just to address the kids. The state law, citing the parents to a parent court, that's still alive and well. This doesn't supersede that or take away from that aspect. And I know there's an eight-year-old that refuses to go to school, and we want to hold them accountable.
Yeah.
We, I think we need to sit down and figure out how we can hold them accountable, because the juvenile department, our hands are going to be strapped unless we have, our hands are going to be tied unless we have some authority from the court. And I don't know, Judge Nichols, I don't know that he's going to order somebody who's eight years old to be supervised by the juvenile department. I don't know that that will happen.
Sure.
He can give us some direction on what he would like to see. So, I think maybe we can talk more about this. I don't disagree with that, but we need some direction, because under the current format, the kid gets cited, so if we're going to cite a seven-year-old to court, then what? The judge is going to, I don't know if Judge Nichols is going to be supportive of that, unless you, have we had conversations with Judge Nichols about this?
Not at this point, no.
So, I think...
We had a truant, we had a truant meeting with your folks represented, and also, Mrs. Krieger was there too, representing the judge, and we discussed this at that meeting that day.
The court was part of that.
Yeah, but I don't think she weighed in with any kind of an opinion or anything, you know. Said she would get it back to the judge, and we've heard nothing since.
Okay. So, unfortunately, I'm here for the rest of the, the rest of the morning, I'm going to have a meeting over lunch hours, so maybe this afternoon, I did, after one o'clock, I can try and, then Judge Nichols here and see...
No, we can go, we can go ahead and, you know, ask the commissioners to table this until we have a conversation with you and the judge.
I think, I think, well, I'm totally supportive of it, but I think we need some direction on what the court's position will be, should, should an eight-year-old be cited, appear in court for truancy, as opposed to the parents. direction on what the court's position will be, should, should an eight-year-old be cited appear in court for truancy, um, as opposed to the parents. I know the cases we're talking about where the nine-year-olds are refusing to go to school and, um, and I'm supportive of that, I just don't know what authority or what the court will do with that.
Okay. You okay, Tony?
Yeah.
All right. Um, okay, we'll do that.
Yeah, I, I think, I see exactly where you guys are coming from and I see where Jake's coming from. So at this point, I kind of feel like, uh, it might be wise to just kind of hear what the other side has to say. But I, I think that this, in looking upon, at this, the first glance, I thought this was a no-brainer, but upon hearing more about it from Jake's side and the history of it, it helps.
Well, just working in the juvenile department and working with the truancy, I wanted Jake to come down because we don't have any teeth in it below a certain age. And we can have all the ordinances we want, but if we don't have any way to do anything about it, we're just spinning.
This is, I just, my thought would be, you know, with those younger children, you're really, you're finding the parent.
Mm-hmm.
That's who you're finding. But that's who my, when I ticket the parent, or ticket, it would be ticketing the parent.
Correct. And I understand that, but if the judge is not going to do that, that's why we need to just see what the judge is willing to do and.
So, so as far as ordinance, normally we have to go through a hearing process. Number five here mentions that it can be changed, the terms and everything at any time. So as you work with the judge and with Jake, would you make sure, run it by legal counsel? Jake, whatever going to change so that we know as a board, parameters that we need to tap?
Number four, I, I won't be just requesting change, it's going to be, it's going to be the team.
It'll be the team, but you, you have access to our legal counsel, they don't.
Sure.
So if you would take that lead on that?
Absolutely.
Just for the process part of it?
Sure.
You guys will set it up to follow the laws?
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions?
We just have such a huge issue with chronic absenteeism, not only here, but it's, it's a state issue, it's a nation, national issue and, um, it's, uh, you know, really expanding by leaps and bounds. We're trying to be both proactive and, you know, we're, you know, running out of positive and proactive things, so I guess sometimes you have to pull the hammer up and use that as well. So.
So I have one last thing that I'll publicly state. There's a list of items here that, uh, you know, that probably fell more on your predecessors and to new commissioners, but I just want to wholeheartedly, verbally thank the county for your part in, you know, everything you did to assist us in, you know, the Haight Playground project. So, uh, you know, removing the asphalt, all the great work the county road department did, and we finally saw that project through to completion. And, um, my thanks to Lake County and the great work you did in helping to see that project through. So thank you.
Thank you. That's, that's great. And our, our road department, the things that were done there, very appropriate that you mentioned them, they're the ones on the ground, thank you.
Yeah, they're happy, just bad.
Thank you.
So thank you.
So we got a couple of minutes. Do you have any other updates or enrollment numbers or anything off the top of your head? How are we doing?
It's remaining about the same. I'm not, I guess I'm not prepared.
I know you're not.
Countywide, I, the numbers, countywide, we're staying right about the same. I think about twelve hundred students, countywide.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, we haven't seen a big.
We're about seven hundred and some, Lake County's like six-seven, I'm going to guess around seven fifty.
Yeah. We had a, a pretty good jump in, in Adele, we went from eight students to nine. So we were able to figure out the five other desks.
A ten percent jump.
Yeah, yeah.
So you mentioned plus, you had a hundred percent increase up there from ten to four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're, uh, we're pushing the boundaries out there too.
Are we still seeing in North Lake, uh, fall enrollment pretty good and then falling off, uh?
Um, I think their, their fluctuation is, is very typical for what, I mean, nothing has changed as far as where they're at in their, their attendance and that kind of stuff. They do have some, you know, students that will transfer over to La Pine and then they'll come back and, you know, they, when you have a school district that close, um, La Pine's not that close, but it is close enough to where parents can be, become angry with the district and they can decide to take their kids elsewhere and then they'll, usually they'll come back. I know that we're not so bad. You know, we're doing our best with our kids and, you know, we'll look at them and stuff. I think overall, uh, right now, the school districts are doing very well, is what I see as a, as an ESD. We have, uh, some, some new projects we're working on right now. We're looking at, Will and I have been meeting with the health district, Charlie, and trying to develop a, a process and an agreement to provide some nursing services for our school districts. Not necessarily having a school nurse, but having a nurse, the robotic services to the school, uh, cause there's, there's a difference there. Um, and by doing this, we would allow, uh, you know, if the, the school district has a question about ringworm, they would be able to call the nurse up and say, hey, you know, what, what do I need to do in this situation? Or, uh, we're going to do, you know, eye checks, would you, could you come down and help us with eye checks? Or, uh, we have that, uh, if there's a health, uh, class in one of the districts that would like learn more information on, on, on some type of, uh, health issue, they'd be able to have the nurse come in and do a, you know, presentation kind of a thing. Um, that kind of stuff. Provide training, uh, for our secretaries, uh, that are doing, uh, if you have a child with diabetes, how do you provide that insulin? They have to have that training every year. Right now, we all, all the districts scramble, you know, trying to find who we're going to give, to give that training because we all have to have it. And so having that person, um, kind of designated would be a little benefit to the district. So that's something we're working on right now, adding that service, um, to the, all the dis, the districts countywide, so.
Very good. Just a thing I want to point out on two, you know, you're the Lake County School District, received a couple of grants, Measure ninety-eight funding and also, uh, the current technical education revitalization grant. It's been a little slow process, but completely retrofitted shop down Lakeview High School, uh, completely reformatted the welding shop. We're going to have it finished up on February eighteenth. Struggled all along, like a lot of construction processes too, but we will have a new welding shop, welding stations, stady or digital welders. We'll keep the old ones around and still train those ranch kids on how to use an old welder, but we'll have the digital welders there. Um, everything's set up, we're still waiting on Norco to come in and install, uh, the oxygen setting stations to get that going. The other thing of this thing is, you know, we have a room, right by the wood shop and the egg shop. We've developed what is now a new small engines lab. It is complete, uh, workstation's tables and brings the Stratton, you know, Mr. Smith went to a workshop three or four years back, they donated five engines to the program. We used Measure ninety-eight funds to, to purchase additional engines as well. So we have a fully functioning small engines laboratory now.
That's awesome.
In addition to that, the egg farm, um, we use Measure ninety-eight funds, that west side of the egg farm for years and years, it's just been kind of a catch-all for, you know, just rye grass, weeds, whatever. And, uh, we use Measure ninety-eight funds to, uh, install a pivot system out there. So we will plow that, farm it and probably, you know, start off with a, you know, critical area of rye crop and make that productive. So, for us for years and years and years, it hasn't, we're not going to, except for maybe a little pile of grazing, that's it.
So all that, that, well, we go back to whenever it used to be functioning and all the things you're talking about, that's great. You know, especially getting a lot of our kids interested in trades and farming and all the other things. Thank you, appreciate it.
And Mrs. Reese has just done a wonderful job. You know, they have a program down there and, uh, there's great things happening with the, the program, Lakeview High School, and Mr. Smith and the shop program too, so.
Very good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Get that to Melanie and we'll give it out to the appropriate, the state. So our next item, we have Warner Creek Correctional Facility strategic plan. And we have, have just a few here today. I'll let you do the introduction, Steve. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Steve Brown, Superintendent Warner Creek Correctional Facility. Nobody wants to sit up with you, Steve?
Well, they are going to.
One at a time. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to come and share with you guys a little bit about Warner Creek, introduce you to the management team out of Warner Creek. We're also fortunate today to have our Assistant Inspector General Jason Brown with us visiting.
Welcome.
Thank you. He thought you'd tag along and, and, uh, see what this was all about. So, um, I gave a handout to Melanie to share with you guys. It's for you to keep, refer to if you like. We're going to just touch on the high points, um, about Warner Creek and then please feel free to ask us questions as we go through. So I'm going to do a little introduction and then we'll go through each of the managers and their service areas. So as you may or may not know, Warner Creek was constructed and opened in September two thousand and five. It's a four hundred bed, was a four hundred bed minimum security, uh, prison. Since then, in two thousand and thirteen, we added ninety temporary emergency beds due to the increase in incarceration rates in Oregon. We still have the ninety temporary emergency beds and most likely will continue to have the ninety, uh, not so temporary emergency beds. And, um, we have, uh, roughly a hundred and seven full-time employees that work out of prison, uh, with a biannual budget of a little over twenty-one million dollars. So, um, to meet the mission of the Order Department of Corrections, which is to promote public safety by holding offenders accountable for their actions while reducing, uh, future criminal behavior, Warner Creek's divided into six different service areas. One of those is our security services, uh, general services, food services, correctional rehabilitation services, health services, and administrative services. As you might expect, my office is responsible primarily with administrative services, uh, which includes budgets, recruitment, retention, which by the way, I will comment on as a major, uh, factor for our business as well as the other businesses. And the school district, you heard earlier, currently have, uh, looking at picking up eight officers, uh, and it's not without a struggle that we do that. So, uh, we appreciate those challenges as we see qualified workforce in Lake County and keep those positions in Lake County. So with that, uh, if you don't have any questions for me right now, I'm going to invite Brian Lee, our security manager up.
I do have one question. What is your ideas on the retention? Do you have any ideas that are keeping people around?
You know, uh, I, I think one of the primary, uh, retention factors is the people that love Lake County, stay in Lake County, uh, those individuals that, that come here for the job at the prison. Uh, I don't know what the, uh, our rate is of those people staying, uh, but generally if they come from, let's say Ben or Madras, at some point they will transfer to the prison in Madras and move back to where they're from. Uh, you have retirements and resignations. The department is very, uh, aware of the challenges around wellness as it relates to corrections, not just in Oregon, but nationwide. Correctional professionals are one of the least well categories of employees there are in the nation. And so we have a wellness center at Warner Creek and a very robust, uh, wellness committee that is doing a wonderful job in enhancing the equipment and resources for staff to utilize that wellness center in a number of ways. Just not physical, but, you know, uh, the eight dimensions of wellness, financial, spiritual, emotional, so we.
So, so I, these guys aren't first on your wellness program. It is all done with employees.
Correct.
Basically it's all funded through the employees. Can you elaborate a little bit about that? Because I, I, whenever you guys started this, it's so encouraging, it's so exciting, just being, or I'd just like to hear a little bit more how, how it's structured, how it's set up and how you've got to where you're at today.
Sure. These guys can correct me if I miss step, but when I got here, we had a wellness committee and in our administration building, there was a wellness center in the back corner of the building, about the size of an office. Uh, and each employee pays ten dollars a month to participate in that wellness committee. And the time since I've been here, our staff came up with some fantastic ideas of taking what was our conference room and turning it into a wellness center, which I think it made the size of a wellness center five times bigger than it was before. And we moved the, the conference room, as most of you know, if you've been out there, to where there used to be cubicles, and we made that into our, our conference room. And since then, we've been able to add spouses of state employees, so they, you can pay another ten dollars, so twenty dollars more if you and your spouse have access to the wellness center. Uh, and just recently modified that to, uh, any dependent that is eighteen years or older living with you can also, uh, participate in that wellness center. All the funds are wellness committee generated through the contributions of employee, no general fund dollars are used in buying equipment or maintaining the equipment. The department does allow us to utilize the room, uh, there, but everything that's in that room is bought by employees.
Yeah, it's, uh, just impressive. I'm, I'm very impressed with what you guys, what the employees and the support from the management has done out there. Don't they, if they use it so much, don't they get, uh, isn't there something on the amount they pay?
You know, I think there was something a while back where if you used the wellness center, didn't we get a, there used to be.
There used to be, okay.
I think they've taken that incentive away, so I say.
But it, but it's ownership of the employees, it's their investment, it's their ownership, their wellness program.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to go sideways, but I, I just, I've been impressed with that.
We're here to answer any questions you have and share a little information with you, so appreciate it. Brian?
Yes. Brian Lee, um, true, you know my history, I grew up in Lakeview, I haven't mentioned it. I grew up in Lakeview, my family moved here in the late seventies, um, graduated high school here in eighty-seven, went over to College Treasure Valley for a, uh, automotive program, a painting program, graduated there. Snake River Correctional Facility was open up ninety-one, came on board, made the original hires there. So I've been with the department for almost twenty-eight years, um, Ontario and here. Came here and started up in two thousand and five. I think they may have built this prison for me.
It's really for me, but it's okay. We're going to let him think that.
I knew I was lobbying just for him.
Yeah. Uh, it was great to come back home and, uh, you know, be with the family, come back to where the country I love. Um, in a nutshell, I'm the institution security manager out there. Security program, uh, basically manages the physical custody of the inmates and ensure institutional security, uh, public safety, safe and humane custody of the inmates incarcerated there and makes it a great place for staff to work, to, to clean this, reorder all these things. Um, a quick note on staffing, under the security umbrella, there's seventy positions, um, fifty general fund, correctional officer positions, we have three corporal positions, five sergeant positions, six lieutenant positions, I have one other fund, um, workforce officer position. We're still trying to figure out how to staff. Uh, it was recently brought to us from another facility. Um, I have an ISDS coordinator who's our staffing guru who keeps all these people I mentioned straight on the shift work. Um, I have an executive support specialist, Warren, who keeps my schedule straight and me. Um, also under the security umbrella is the inmate work program, uh, section, and I have a program analysis two and an office specialist two that works in that section to keep the inmate programs and work programs going, which is anything custodial inside the facility to the work crews, the fire crews. Security also oversees, um, training advisory committee, which is a push to keep our staff well-trained. Uh, if we have good trained, well-trained staff, they're going to be more capable of making confident and competent decisions and being successful in their careers. Also oversees the emergency management team, field training, uh, and evaluation program for the new staff through that first year and then they kind of go, not under, but through the, uh, training advisory committee for all training that goes through. And that's Reader's Digest version of the security program.
Just a quick comment from my bench point. Uh, Mr. Lee has done a fabulous job with our training advisory team. Uh, you know, as, as the state of Oregon and you're aware of in the county, our, our budgets go up and down for various reasons. We made a commitment a number of years ago, regardless of what the budget does and what the department can do, and they are committed to training, but we can only do so much as an agency. We committed locally at Warner Creek that regardless of that, we're going to provide world-class training to our staff and ensure that they can be, uh, confident, competent in what they do. So it's a high priority. So it's a high priority, which I think speaks to one of your questions about retention, is if you're highly trained and highly competent, you feel confident to come to work every day and to meet those challenges. So we're working on that and it's only gotten better over the years since we put this team together. So I appreciate Brian's efforts and the whole staff. Any questions for me? Okay?
Thank you.
And I was David Hammond, our general services manager, come up and share a little bit about this section.
Hello, good morning, officials. David Hammond is general services manager. What general services really is, is I directly supervise physical plant, safety and sustainability. And Mr. Schneider, who will speak with you soon, he oversees food service warehouse, canteen, and our business services. I came here at or five, I had thirteen years prior with a contract over in Kevin James across the west coast. Came here as food service manager, promoted to transition service manager, and now I'm over at physical plant in the general services role. It's about four million dollar state food funds, which recently, this last biennial has cut by about a half a million, which is maybe a really challenging year. Our focus in specifically just the physical plant is reliability, center maintenance. So the concept of fixing of heartbreaks, so it's a step past just keeping up on your regular equipment. So that works well, you know, especially when you have challenged funding opportunities. You know, keep a one on the shelf, someone that does break, we have the ability to correct it with the least impact on the institution. As Mr. Brown stated, four hundred and ninety people living there, they all have an opinion. If something breaks, there's an issue. So we work hard to make sure that, that doesn't happen. Safety aspect of this is everything from your OSHA rules and laws to our fire extinguisher trainings inside the facility for all staff at Warner Creek. And then also the sustainability piece incorporates not only just our lighting and heating, which is geothermal, but our recycling efforts, which we did in two thousand and eighteen, thirty thousand, just up to November.
Three thousand pounds?
Yeah, thirty thousand pounds of recyclables. And we actually send them, besides what we give locally for recycling, we send it back to Salem. So it's not really in our landfill. It's really important the impacts of that here. Maybe just, yes, we're gonna have a positive impact, but we definitely don't want to have a negative one. So we try to minimize that as much as possible. We also have the, which Mr. Schneider can talk to, recycling of food items. So we can use that as compost for the garden program, which we also oversee.
Want to mention the number of folks, thirteen, did all that work done?
Yeah, we have, in general services, there's thirteen total employees. Within that, there's myself, Mr. Schneider is the food services manager. We have two office specialists. We have five food service coordinators, which he'll speak to. And three facility maintenance staff, who are, one, the track that does our geothermal refrigeration and track, and two facility maintenance specialists. So we actually have one of the, we're one of the lowest staffed facilities in the Oregon Department of Corrections. But we keep it together, so.
Do you have any questions for me?
We may shotgun you to attend.
Yeah.
Get everybody to attend.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Tom Schneider, food services manager at Warner Creek. Been there now for two years, going to my third now. My wife grew up in Lake County, followed her down here. I'm from Portland area originally, but we've lived here for now sixteen years. So glad to be a part of the operations and moving forward here with the food services presentation. So we oversee ninety or so inmate workers between all the service areas. So between the kitchen, gardening, sagebrush, canteen operations, warehouse. There's about ninety AIC workers, AIC meaning adult in custody. So I have six staff though that supervise those individuals. And like Mr. Hammond said, five food service coordinators. They actually are in charge of running the ship, producing the meal. And we produce about fifteen hundred meals a day, and that's inclusive of the Lake County jail as well. So we have a contract with you folks to supply those meals to you regularly. So in about a year's time, that's well over a half a million meals, quite a lot, so three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So DOC has a mandated cost per inmate per day target, which is two dollars and fifty-five cents. Currently, Warner Creek's at two dollars and thirty-two cents, well under that. So that's for all three meals combined, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, per day, two dollars and thirty-two cents, very good.
Excellent. The counselor, the project.
Tom runs a tight show.
Very good. So it's two thirty-two?
Two dollars and thirty-two cents.
That's for all three meals?
All three meals combined, per inmate, per day.
Wow, that's impressive. That's a lot of Tom from now.
Much better than that.
I guess I would have to relook at our contract.
I told you not to tell him that.
Thanks, Tom.
That's not what we charge you, though.
A little bit of profit.
I also have collateral duties that I oversee, pre-a compliance manager, as well as the business office liaison. Food services is involved in our community with not only having the contract with jail, but we also contract and partner with specific pine products for sodas for compostment program. Last year saved us about five hundred bucks a month in disposal fees, so it's very good. We've hosted also the local lunch names at the prison as well and have had our first senior appreciation brunch with the Lake County Senior Citizens Association last year. We also work directly with the Institute of Applied Ecology for our sagebrush program. Could be some questions basically on what we do and how we do that. And our local BLN field offices also, so being involved in the community in that way. That's all I've got. Any questions for me, specific?
Well, comment to all of DOC here, the partnership, especially on the food side of it for our jail, has gave us the stability, finance, and guarantee that we have those meals. In my time, that has been a partnership that's just incredible. So thank you so much for that, and that goes all of DOC. Being the partner with Lake County and everybody else, but specifically in our jail, incredible. Really, really appreciate that. So do you guys, on your delivery of food, I mean, for you guys that have food vendors or like Cisco or, you know, those guys, do you guys have like backup? Like if we had a cascade effect type deal, how much food do you store?
So at our, at our local warehouse inside of our secure perimeter, we've got a three-week supply of food, but there's also emergency pallets in Madras. So if the, if the subduction zone were in the valley, for instance, and we couldn't get through to Salem where we get our truck every week with our groceries in it. If that were a problem, we'd then go to Deer Ridge, who's on the east side of the state. So that's kind of our contingency plan for that.
And how much space do you have out there? Do you have enough space to store more than three weeks, or are you guys pretty limited?
Well, we have lots of room, actually. The warehouse in itself, we've got a very large freezer. It's probably one of the larger freezers in DOC next to Deer Ridge, which is probably twice the size of that. But it is, it's huge, really. And then the freezer box is separate then from the cooler box. So that square footage, I'm not sure, maybe David has that square footage number. I don't, but it's enormous. So certainly lucky to come out to tour.
Yeah, I think we're gonna try to do that.
Maybe today? Yeah, maybe today, if we have time.
If you guys have time for us. So just before Tom leaves, he's being kind of modest. I don't know if you guys, you're probably aware, maybe not, Prison Rape Elimination Act, what you mentioned, pre-up. We had our audit this last fall. And we got our audit results back and auditor, you know, the nationally trained auditor, she came down from Washington Department of Corrections with two other Washington state staff, audited Warner Creek. And we came through with flying colors, just, you know, a reflection of the work that every staff member does at Warner Creek every day in keeping our facilities safe, not only for the staff, but for the inmates incarcerated there also. So Tom is a pre-a compliance manager, locally oversees that effort. And coming into corrections a little over two years ago, picking up that role, just reflecting, great job to do it. So thank you.
You're welcome. One question, actually, something on the sagebrush, I just didn't catch the last end of it, so what was that?
Right, so we partner with the Institute of Applied Ecology out of Corvallis. And through them, we are kind of the workforce around their sagebrush program. So the inmates sow these sagebrush seeds. They nurture those plants all throughout their, their growing season, basically. So they'll start planting sometime in April, and then they'll go and harvest those and plant those out in places like Paisley where they have the winter's, winter vine?
Watson Creek.
Whatever that one was.
It's okay.
Sorry. And transplant those plants with the inmates, actually. And with a few folks, I think the Paisley kids helped out with that as well. There was some suppress on that. So that's kind of what that program is. It's not our dollars that really run that, but we supply that labor for that component.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Mr. Stancliff, I think you're up.
All right. Probably take the rest of the time. Do you have an issue? Just look at the, make sure you can, you know, some quick facts. She's satisfied. Some of your questions.
I'm Peter Stancliff, correctional rehabilitation manager at Warner Creek. And corrections in a nutshell is the application of external controls to modify or to control behavior. So from the community, the remanded care and custody of the state, we have those internal controls to contain that population during their period of incarceration and try to maintain our safety. But creates long-term safety, and more importantly, upon that return back into the community and our conversations surrounding recidivism, is reducing the use and application of those external controls and encouraging them growing, fostering internal control. So that when those that are currently incarcerated return to their communities, they can successfully integrate. Correctional rehabilitation services is tasked with trying to provide some of those opportunities. I'm gonna try to read through a little bit, give you a feel, correctional rehabilitation services and the different components of that. Correctional rehabilitation services provides access points to multiple facets of personal good and development opportunities. Sorry about that, I can fight a cold. The adults in custody are prepared for community leading through specific interventions related to their corrections plans, such as work, education, focused treatment, and entry programs. Underneath that, we have religious services and we have about seventy volunteers that are Lake County. Most of them are Lake County citizens, a lot of them have been coming out since startup of two thousand and five. So I do want to thank county commissioners. I know Mr. Commissioner Miners has been on our prison advisory committee for a number of years. And there was a lot of effort put in by Lake County to bring Warner Creek to have Oregon Department of Corrections side of prison here. And the staff, you know, really appreciate the effort and the continual support from the county commissioners office on that. That extends to the volunteers that we have coming out, the feeling from the community. And those volunteers make an incredible impact on the adults in custody as they come out. They're role modeling appropriate pro-social behavior. They're setting an example, they're also interacting and engaging with them on a personal level. And speak to them, a lot of it is face-to-face and face-to-face organizations, but skills and different classes, our classes in those things over the years, they've been very impactful. So we've had great support from the county and community in this effort that we can't duplicate. We don't have the resources of an department to not have volunteers, so we rely heavily on them. They do a fantastic job for us. So they provide and develop spirituality, perspective, worldview, hope and expectation comprises fifteen percent of success in the integration. And the volunteers and religious services really did a great job in steering hope and fostering that. We oversee the law library, and that provides access to the courts, resolution of legal matters. And it also elevates consciousness, consciousness of human rights and responsibilities, citizenship, and what our responsibilities are in the community. We have correctional counselors, we have two of those. Those oversee trying to address those criminal risk factors that they come through intake and they're assessed and it's kind of identified what those issues are that have been plaguing them, causing some of the criminality in that where it's drug and alcohol, substance abuse issues, anti-social programming, libation, and those things. Then they work off those assessments with the adults in custody to try to develop a case plan and then specific behavioral change plans. They continue to break that down into what can be addressed today and motivate those individuals. And that's that part of building, build those internal controls so that they can learn to be, that they have choices and options in those choices and that they're responsible for those choices and what they can do. We have a release counselor who works closely with Mr. Greer and community directions in developing a release plan for those going out and making sure that they've got an address identified and a place to live, hopefully employment, and they can get out and start to work on their post-graduation supervision and reintegrating. We have the education department, which provides GED, literacy, English as a second language, and a lot of independent study courses. And that makes a big difference for the adults in custody, that while they're there, they're learning, growing, developing, and again, it's helping to support the growth of those internal control. We have records office, wants to happen that. They oversee and maintain all of our hard files and records for inmates there. They do some extra work to try to obtain social security cards, birth certificates, DMV identifications of those vital records and information they're gonna need when they get out in order to be employable. We have a mailroom, and we process between seven, nine thousand pieces of mail. And then we can go up to ten to twelve thousand during holiday periods where there's a lot more communication, a lot of things. So that's a vital link out to the community. Hopefully, they're re-establishing or building relationships so that they have support when they get out and they have those folks working to help them reintegrating. It definitely makes a difference during, during, during incarceration, how those communications and how visits have folks cannot see them. We process a lot of visiting applications, have some classes that we try to put on outside of education services by recreational opportunities. There's a lot surrounding that, if it wasn't appropriate leisure time activity. Those that were employed, and that wasn't what they came to prison for, it was generally what they were doing outside of work hours. So what does that look like and how do we support that? How do we build a life that you can engage in socialization and recreation without it being negative, without it being unhealthy? But it's healthy recreation. Let's see. I'm running out of time. So, so the bottom line is ninety-three percent of those in custody are gonna be released and returning to the community. So whatever we can do while they're inside to engage them and mean So statewide, there's three majorments that we look at with recidivism. One of them is just arrest after on post-prison supervision, that's 55% for the state, 42% of another conviction and reincarceration is about 18% statewide. So those numbers for Lake County specifically, on incarceration at three years, it's only For conviction of a misdemeanor felony at three years, it's 38.8%. So those numbers are lower than the statewide average.
And that was gonna be one of my questions because of, Steve knows my concern is the legislature has changed and I call it double stacking prisons and even people in our communities, I think the numbers are going to change. The handout you gave is the recidivism rates is in 2013 at least. I would encourage the upper parts of the state DOC to get that up to 2019 recidivism rates, I think it's gonna change. I really do think that, that throughout the state of Oregon, we've been so proud of our recidivism rate and I think through the legislature where they're making you have extra 90 people out here at this prison and that other ones are gonna have 200 more and everything, you can't help but have an impact on that. It's just a strain on services. It's nothing against employees or DOC, but our state legislature is where that's happening now. And so I've always had that concern, I voiced it from day one, as Mr. Brown knows, very supportive of the prison, that our state legislatures probably don't really realize the potentially impact, long-term impact of double stacking prisons can have on communities. My personal opinion, it's not fact-driven at this time, but I think it'll come out over the next few years. I think there'll be some things.
I think there's sound logic in that, but there's a lot of factors that come together. What's socially acceptable is that fluctuates and changes within our communities and those elements all come together. So the standard recidivism rate is about a three-year window, so you have to go back three years and see what that cohort, first and second cohort for that year did. So that's why most of the numbers are a little behind. I do have the information I can provide for you and the Criminal Justice Commission has a website that you can go on and get up-to-date recidivism data and they have several different ways to pull that. I left the link right there for you if you wanted to explore that.
I can have it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So one other question, well, it's not really a question. I went to OS Oregon State Pen with the Step Up Program a couple of times and they had a program called Rise Up and it was the lifetime, inmates with life sentences that spoke to the kids. It wasn't a scared straight type deal, it was more of I made this mistake on this one day and this is the consequences of this mistake. They led up to that day, you know, and what they were doing and what they were involved with, that cost them pretty much everything. And I guess it's not the warden, they don't call him warden.
Superintendent.
Superintendent wouldn't let us come anymore. I think it was the guy under him, I can't remember his name, study whatever. But that had, on those kids, had lasting effect. And it would be awesome if we could create a program with inmates that, you guys would have to figure out which ones could lead that program and have one of your guys over them. And I'd take the kids out there myself, just to have them speak, to say, you know, what led me up to doing my crime and doing my time and just for the kids that are on edge, like with some of the kids that Jake worked with or the youth investment, you know, that would sway them in other direction. I think it would reduce the crime in our youth, which would reduce the crime in the adults because we all know that if they're doing crimes as a youth, that more likely they're gonna be adults where you guys are. And so, I don't know, I know that's a big deal, but it really worked and I seen it firsthand. So, you know, I know that you guys are sworn to already and have time to do, but that would be something our local community could really benefit from, the testimonies of those inmates that you think would be productive citizens, because we all know some of them will, but then there's some ones that are gonna be turds forever. And if we could figure something out like that, I'd be more than happy to support that.
Thank you. Something Mr. Stancliff admits that I just want to bring up if you heard, he has two institution counselors that report to him and as you know, there's 490 adults in custody out there. So Mr. Stancliff, his two institution counselors do a really fabulous job with the resources we have to make a positive impact in addressing those internal controls. The department recognizes that we really should have four institution counselors. So just hats off to Darby Dick and Jeff Conley who are our institution counselors and do a really good job every day.
So can you guys get more, I mean, because are they your mental health counselors also or?
No.
So do you have mental health counselors out there?
Not at the same.
And then let me look at, how many of them are suffering from mental health problems?
Significant amount probably, I don't know the statistics.
I think department-wide, about 60% are impacted by mental.
Someone?
Department-wide, we don't have anybody housed at Warner Creek that has a diagnosed condition that requires monitoring, that is, requires continued monitoring. If you have that, then you have to, if we have those individuals there, then you have to have. I'm just gonna jump in, sorry. Sorry Stancliff.
I'll just wrap up with, I really appreciate this, this could be one job, you mean go to 500. So with the 13 staff in Corrections, Correctional Services, we're probably going to the job of 6,500 people.
So that's a good segue to Yaley Pickerman, our medical services manager.
So I grew up here, my husband grew up here, moved away, came back because we wanted our kids to grow up. So after college, living in Montana and Boise, we came back in 2002 to raise Mason and then we decided it's such a great community, let's have two more when he's 14. We're doing it again. But I am the medical services manager at Warner Creek and medical health services is the largest unit under the Correctional Services Division. Warner Creek right now has 10 onsite staff, which consists of six nurses, one dentist, one dental assistant, one office specialist, one physician who is actually contracted, which is Dr. Graham, and he comes out there for four hours a week. And one is the medical services manager and we provide all the healthcare, including mental health services as needed to all of the inmates within Warner Creek. It is a self-sustaining, so when we have patients that need referred, we take care of it internally first if we can, because it's the most cost-effective way. Health services is somewhat unique in that we have our own little branch, we have to have autonomy so that there cannot be anything that security has influenced or decision anybody's healthcare. So we have our own little branch and we work within that branch. We have, you guys were asking about mental health services, if somebody has a mental health issue that arises, we have tele-video possible so that they can contact, you know, we take care of them initially for any initial and then it's deferred on and they can use tele-video services. But anybody that requires constant monitoring cannot house at Warner Creek because they need to have someone on-site, that's not.
Feasible.
It's not, it's not feasible to get that.
Through the screening process, they don't end up here.
No, they're, it's a pretty in-depth screening.
So can they do the tele-health or tele-mental health at any time? Or does it have to be prescribed by a doctor?
No, no, but the doctor has no prescribing in mental health. If all of the nursing staff do that, we have a criteria we need, then we just work directly with the mental health and then you need work directly with us and we have multiple hats that we have to work, we control all of them. The nursing staff regulates, we're like their own pharmacy, we have order of meds for them, get them the, Dr. Graham who comes out for four hours oversees all of that. So the nursing staff are very, they have a lot of autonomy in what we do, the physicians have. It's more than just what you do at the hospital, you know, just care and just, because ultimately the goal of, for us is all of these, as Mr. Stancliff was saying, are gonna come back into our community. Well, what's the biggest drain on them is people not effectively accessing healthcare. Our goal is to, this is your disease process, this isn't my disease process, this is your disease, how are you gonna manage it? How are you gonna make the choices to get you the best care? When you can reduce and educate these people who have a very low education level, that this is your reason how to, how are you gonna control it? You're gonna reduce the antostomy and they're not gonna be seeking the ER because they're, they have a cold, they're gonna know how to manage the health of their diabetes, they're gonna be well-controlled, they're not gonna be going into ER with DKA and all these other complications. That's the goal. And for us, on our strategic plan, we kind of put this forth and now other institutions are wanting to work with us. How are you doing this? But how are you doing this? So we work with other institutions in getting this accomplished. I won't go into it too much because.
There's just not enough time. I can see your excitement to.
No, that's fine.
Being in a minimum security in the screening process and for people to end up at this institution, you're not gonna have a chronic mental illness show up here.
No.
So.
If it shows up, because lots of people want to come for a minimum, they are okay, this isn't the best fit for you, you gotta go to someplace where you can get the services they need.
Any questions? So, well Jake has a question, I'll let him go ahead.
I have a question, I just have a comment. I'm not sure the board is aware, but recently, within the last few months, we've partnered with Warner Creek for training purposes. Because through the Department of Public Safety, extension training where are expected to have so much training per year in certain areas, because the police department is no longer there, we've lost some of our facilitators, training facilitators. I've reached out to Mr. Lee and we've been able to incorporate ourselves in some of their trainings, which is, save us a huge cost from sending, me sending my staff out of county to get that training in other counties.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, don't you bring DPSST here to this facility that the decision was made many years ago and you worked at, keep that quality of training?
And that's true for bigger trains, but when we're talking for smaller trains such as use of force and TASER training, that's, that's something that's really regional training, that's in-house because not every county has TASER, not every county, every county has their own facilitator. So we've been utilizing the institution for those and the partnership, not only for training, but for cooperation has been phenomenal. And I think Director Peters would agree that the cooperation between the county and Warner Creek is one to be looked at statewide because it's very, it's a very good working relationship. So thank you, Mr. Brown. You're welcome. Thank you Jake.
So, so we, we are quite a bit over, so you have a question that's just for you to ask.
Just one question, just one question. What is your name, man?
Oh, Yaley Pickerman.
Kaylee.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm verbal with names, that is the question. And I wanted to make sure that I got your name, so thank you.
You're welcome.
So I, I'd like to sort of, there's so many things, I've been involved forever as everybody knows, and I'm so proud of having the prison here and have the employees in our community and have all the things. Years ago, when the governor came down, we never looked at this as economic development and it is not, but it has an impact on economic development within Lake County and employees, the payroll and everything that turns around in our community is very much appreciated, very much appreciated. Comment, this last fall in crunch time, our brand stands out at the fairgrounds, we used the work group, it's gotten quite expensive, but it's quality when we get the worker there and the supervision that comes with it, appreciate that. Would love to go back to the original agreement back when, before legislature changed some things for the local community workforce, you know, that's very reasonable for a lot of things. Maybe someday we'll get back there, but still having that workforce for whatever people can, entities can afford to do that is appreciated. Appreciate you guys keeping that alive, obviously, that's, that's important to the community. So, you know, I, I could talk for hours on this myself. I encourage the enthusiasm of especially Mark here talking on the mental health side and the programs and the different things and that's where through the PAC, we can bring some things forward and ideas. And so looking forward to our new commissioners seeing the support and having the support that I have over the years. So thank you and to all the employees.
Thank you guys for giving us your time, really appreciate it. I'm all good. So.
Thank you for being here.
Please note.
Only if he wants to.
Well, I don't want to take up any of your time here, it's a pleasure to be here. I really sat in to kind of, I first of all came down here, my first time in Warner Creek, I've been with DOC for about a year and a half in Inspector General's office and Steve's been trying to get me down here and finally chose the perfect time of the year to come on down and hang out. So this is a great opportunity for me to hear this brief out and I'm really encouraged by the partnership here and I, I will take this back as an example of how some of our counties should be working with our state entities and this is absolutely fantastic. So thank you for allowing me to sit in.
Appreciate that and just to tie on that a little bit, for the PAC committee to still be functioning from 2005, pre-2005 till today is a testament of the community's support and staying involved and so.
Early as, because it's one of the few left.
Yes.
Are you gonna be around today?
I am, I am gonna be at the institution, I've got, I think from 1:00 to 5:00 definitely and yeah, so I will be there.
Yeah, I actually have a ton of questions, I know we don't have any time, but I'm really looking forward to coming out and meeting you all there on the site and hopefully we'll be seeing you later today. So that would be fantastic.
What time are you doing an actual tour this afternoon?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Oh, is it tomorrow? Was it scheduled for tomorrow?
So I thought I let you guys know the schedule, we will accommodate whatever works for you guys. So is it for sure tomorrow?
Okay.
Are you guys good with that?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine with us.
What time do you have them coming out tomorrow?
2:05.
2:05, okay, I wrote it down for the day, that's my mistake.
That's right.
I did that wrong.
We'll be ready for you.
And I might have been snuffing you. I'm not sure.
So just want to say thank you on the behalf of the Department of Corrections in Warner Creek for really the great-looking relationship that we've had and hope to continue to have with the county commissioners and all your support, so appreciate it. Thanks for letting us come and share with you today.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Just, we're running real late. Just, we're running real late, apologize, but we're gonna have to have a five-minute break before we get going. Arnold, you're not gonna have our attention.
Okay.
Are you not gonna have?